Okay, we are all here. It is Thursday, March 30th, 6:00 PM. This is the planning board. This is our fourth workshop session on the Form B's code. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to really just begin to draft an outline of all of the recommendations that this board wishes to make to the common council. I know I had requested comments from individuals. We got comments from Andrew and Sage. Yay, the two alternates. They get gold stars. The rest of you get 10. So Kyla did start a rough list going through our notes of all of the meetings. But I don't know if you guys have any thoughts how to just organize this? If we want to go around the table? If you want to just give us a point? You know, or say any comments, any, anything that you must say? Or if you want to say positive stuff? Okay. Wayne, I'm in, it's your chair, so you're meeting.
No, it's, well, do you want to go back to our previous meetings and hit like different times?
That's what I was gonna say. Each, each meeting, we had a different section to deal with. So I think I kind of relied on staff to take the notes and where we were.
We have a lot, we have a lot of notes.
Yeah.
Getting those into solid recommendations is now interesting task. But let's just see here. I'm trying to hit the high notes here on some of that. And we don't need you to be here. I actually can come down and lock the door and...
I feel much safer. Oh.
You want to...
You want us in?
I, I know a lot of times you guys don't, you don't actually...
This is just a workshop session, so there's no applicants coming in. It's just us on our own.
No, I can come lock the door.
It's about me being safer for her to stay here.
So I gotta go to look. Okay. So Kyla, okay, so Kyla's put up on the screen a start of the, some notes that we had taken. I don't know that she has the map on this or not. One of the first, at the first meeting, we also, we looked at the plan. I had the plans and all the maps. And the one comment that you did have was on Washington Avenue. You had thought that it was a T4N neighborhood, and you wanted it to go, you thought that it might be better suited to be a T4 Main Street, which would allow...
That's the gateway?
Yes. That was from the, the, from City Line to, and then you talked about Hurley Avenue. Then you talked about extending it to North Front. And then you talked about possibly going to Lucas. So maybe we can start with that map. I...
Hard to read for a moment, say.
I probably would start with the map because there was only one map issued, and that was the fir- first meeting.
Regulating?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I did print one up on the screen. So right now, right at the City Line is a special district, and it's there because of the Dutch Village Apartments and the Best Western. And there is a small parcel in front of Best Western that is the pizza shop. And then everything from that point in is what is that T4 neighborhood district. So I think, obviously...
That's the intersection you have, Stony or another complexes. Well, Dutch Village is back over. There's another complex.
But is this map, did you guys update the maps since those comments? Because this map is all blue, which is T4 Main.
Now, it's, it's T4NO up there.
You're pulling up the map.
And you wanted to go to T4 Main Street.
Or T, I think there was, yeah, right.
We didn't want to go a shade darker.
So a lot of the, you know, the differences, if you look, you know, a lot of the uses stay the same.
It's have to hide.
You can, you know, lodging obviously still would be allowed use.
And we, did you say that Block 10 was kind of in agreement with this, too? That it looked sound good, or?
We, we went over it with him. He barely, he didn't say one way or the other.
I think...
One difference would be auto-oriented services are no longer allowed by, by right. They would be allowed with special permit.
Did the T4 open raise the height of the buildings? That was our thought, because when we, if I recall the discussion, we had possible redevelopment, eventually of the, all the in property, Best Western.
It does allow for middle to greater heights, yes.
For Savings Bank, obviously.
And certain building architectural types, too.
Yeah.
So it would be, if you look at, the only other T4 Main Street that is in the city of Kingston is actually down on Delaware Avenue. So if you're looking to try and achieve something like what you have in uptown Kingston in the heart of your business district, that's the kind of, you know, design that you're looking to encourage in that gateway, you really want to look at the T5 Main Street, possibly. So I think you need to kind of focus on more of the architectural design that might be allowed. It sounds like you want to go to a Main Street. So it just depends, do you want to go, what density do you want to go to?
I was, my thought from the discussion, at least my feeling, was from looking at the parcel, you look at Best Western, you look at the Hurley Avenue, Doctor's Offices that are one stories, that potentially need to be developed in there. Freeman Building, Olson Savings Bank, we talked about the medical building on Washington Avenue. If any of these buildings wanted to go larger, more dense, higher, that, that area, that gateway area could support it, because it's mostly commercial buildings, and they're not on the heels of residential neighborhoods. You look at like Hurley Avenue with the medical building, Ready Care, EPW, they're all like three, four, five-story buildings. It's, it's, you know, an area that we can go up a little bit, and we're not on top of residential, I mean, there's, the residential neighborhoods are, to get further out, Hurley Avenue about by Bailey. And when you look at from Lucas over, you've got Joy's Lane and Deed Stadium, and you don't have so much of residential neighborhood there either. So I think that should be like more uptown, more commercial built.
But your heights between your T4NO and your T4MS, your heights really don't differ at all. They're pretty much exactly the same. Maximum is three-story. You could potentially get a bonus height of an additional story. Accessory buildings, two and a half-story. First floor height, 16-foot minimum. So you'll be more like towards a retail type component. But that's the same, it's the same across the board. In your building form, your build-two zone goes from five to fif- five-foot minimum to 15-foot max in the T4NO. So there, there's a setback there. Versus in the T4MS, it's zero or five, zero to five. So they want it closer to the street. That's more pulling in tighter to the street. Frontage occupancy is 70% minimum. Okay, so...
Well, no, you have a really different section.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still reiterated right here.
Shows building...
I don't think we're trying to push buildings to the, to the street side on...
So then the T4NO would be more...
Well, or these...
T5?
The T5.
But not the Main Street.
I'm thinking with T5.
Flex or the T5N. With the T5N, you get a bigger square footage, a footprint. Whereas in the T5 Flex, you don't have any.
But see, and, or we're not in a special height overlay?
Heights are down, so you've got three, you can go up to three and a half in the T5N, or four max in the T5SF Flex, or with the, well, you're not in a special height overlay there. So that would not be applicable here. That's along the Broadway corridor.
But why wouldn't, I'm just, for example, like where Metzger Wealth is, and, you know, there's a two-story building, and where Bank of America is, why wouldn't we want somebody to tear down one of those smaller, one or two-story buildings to be able to build it four or five stories?
I'm saying this, yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think anybody, I don't think any of the board members that were at the first workshop session disagreed with that.
Yeah.
I think it's, you know, which, you know, what do you think is more appropriate? I think in, in looking at comparisons by using that chart, I don't think that going to the T4 Main Street is really the answer.
No.
To achieve what you are, are thinking, what your vision is for that gateway.
We don't have a lot of areas in Kingston where we can put like industrial size, corporate office, things, something like that. I'm thinking those are, that's the area that if it were to happen...
I also want you just to keep in the back of your head, I mean, yes, it's also the gateway in Kingston and to the, one of the primary historic districts. So you just gotta, you know, you want to keep that balance in mind as well.
Yeah.
But just, the Schwenck Drive section here is T5N, too. So if you were going to go with that, it would just be extending this out to include this other section.
I think that's what we kind of discussed, if I recall correctly.
T5N.
T5N or T5MS?
Well, MS would then bring the, the...
To the street?
Buildings really close to the street. And it also...
I don't think you want that.
You would have less building height.
No.
Those would have to be, the T5F and the T5N allow for large and small multiplex, minor buildings, stack flats. The T5F would also allow for Main Street buildings if you want it to be storefront Only difference, the T5N allows for duplex and detached house, which is kind of interesting.
But the T4, those too.
I know, but this is a long Schwenck Drive.
Yeah.
I wonder why it's not... Could also make a general statement that just says to look at changing this to either T5N or T5F. Let's see what...
I would go, I don't, I don't think that area should be on the street, or maybe on the street between Lucas and...
North Front.
North Front.
So keep the, keep the properties that front on Washington.
On Washington.
And may change those.
I think you're talking about between North Front and Lucas.
Maybe have, maybe have that. Also those.
They're also smaller properties.
Smaller properties. Maybe make that the one T-section, and then when you get beyond North Front or up it to the T5.
See, I think that section probably would be more suitable to that build-to-street building.
Kind of like phase it.
I mean, that, that one block there, I mean, they're pretty much, most of the buildings are already right there now.
Correct. So that would be a T5N?
Can I re- explain that?
Well, this is thorough, maybe because of the...
So from the City Line to the railroad, we're going to keep pretty much everything in the special district then. Or do you want to, do you want to extend something beyond that?
From the City Line to...
To the railroad, I'm working down.
To the railroad tracks?
Yeah, where, you know, the rail, or you've got Petron Lane, you've got the rail trail crossing. That's kind of where the special district line is, where the railroad cross, you know, the Cascano Mountain Railroad crosses Washington right now.
Yeah, but that's, that's, I would go close to the city, to Hurley.
No, what I'm saying, right now, that's special district.
So starting here.
Do you want to start, do you want to start at the City Line, or do you want to include that?
That is a City Line.
No, the City Line is the...
District border.
The center alignment of the creek.
They have the SD.
Yes, special district.
What kind of redevelopment for the hotel does SD?
Um...
Is that special because it's what, you know, what, what...
No.
I think it's just because of the type of use that is there.
It's the uses that are there. And again, this is like any other zoning map, okay? It could be amended, it can be amended, just like you can amend the current map. I mean, you still have that ultimately, you know, you can apply for, you know, redistricting or reach, you know, getting a transect to finish.
But I'm just, I'm just trying to, just because when I look at the hotel, and then I look at the Reese Building, and I look at Best Western on the other side of the trail, I'm not seeing why there should be a difference between the two districts. You got one hotel on one side of the tracks that's in a T4NO, and you got SD on the other side of railroad track. That doesn't make sense to me.
I'm not exactly sure why.
I just feel like that whole area should just be one district.
Well, the Plaza, I think, is unique. That's special district because of the Plaza.
Correct.
Obviously, that should stay that way.
Correct. But like Dutch Village, I mean, somebody could buy the hotel and tear it down and put in housing. Somebody could buy Best Western instead of doing a two-story, do a four-story hotel. That's, a lot of hotels are smaller, but they go up. Like all the Marriott's and, and Hampton Inn's that are out in town of Olson. I'm just thinking like, that's the area where, you know, you'd put a four-story hotel.
Hotel, they're all booked.
Yeah, they, they need their own book. But somebody, I mean, Best Western is, I'm not, you know, eventually they just tear it down, they'll know. It's not worth renovating.
To allow the, to allow for existing driving, commercial, and industrial flex use areas enable their role within the city and prevent non-conforming lots, buildings, and uses. See, commercial, there's commercial special district and flex. The gray is the flex.
Yeah, but I just pulled up the colors. It's SDC and S...
Yep. SDC is commercial, and SDMF is multi, S, special district, multifamily.
I'm just thinking on the other side of the rail trail, between the rail trail and Hurley Avenue should be SDC. Those are all like little...
Well, between the rail, yeah, so you think that should be a special district, commercial too?
Yeah.
Or do you think it should go to...
Yeah, because you got, you got Best Western, you got Bank of America, you got Reese Insurance, those are all doctor's offices and commercial buildings. And then across the street, you got...
Well, I don't think you want to, I mean, I, I mean, I don't think looking at what the uses are now is the way to propose a district. I think you want to look at, how do you see that area getting, being developed, ultimately being developed?
That's my point. That area is, those old buildings and sevens are going to get torn down, and you're going to have new...
I don't think the special district then is the right one to go between the rail trail and Hurley. I think it, it is more of a T4NO or even the T5.
I'm definitely thinking T5.
Is that what we proposed in that one, like that going to T5 in that quarter?
I think so.
But does SDC allow more uses than a T5?
I think it just allows for more...
It's a lot of rent.
Yeah, like bigger parking lots, things that aren't encouraged in this new code, you know, like parking kind of anywhere on the site. A lot of the code tries to bring the buildings more prominent, forward-facing, parking at the rear, all that kind of thing.
But that's not what we currently have.
These are just allowing for what's currently there to, to remain conforming.
Conforming.
Not creating non-conforming uses. I'm not sure why. You know, maybe that does make sense to change this one.
Well, we'll make our list on, so the Best Western, possible change.
So that allows for really big front yard setbacks.
SDC.
Very...
Is that T5N?
T5N.
I know, but would you want, if they were not done, would you want them that way?
So, yes. Were we, were we looking to do T5N from the City Line to Lucas Avenue?
I see a storefront, Hurley Avenue.
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean there's no parking. There's parking in the rear or, this particular lot is huge, and this lot is, is really large, where these, you know, if these were being developed, maybe you would put the building kind of more in the front, parking in the rear. I mean, this is a banked building. I don't know if we want too many special districts out, you know, too many areas in the city that are considered special districts. So if you were talking from here down, we could put these two on hold for now. But if you're talking from here, this direction.
To Lucas.
Towards, yeah, say you want to go from there to North Front Street first.
Yeah.
Or there to Hurley first.
Yeah. I mean, I just see that whole area as a larger buildings and larger lots for redevelopment in the city.
And we went up Hurley Avenue, too, at least. Now, we go out on there.
And I would go out to where, I mean, Bailey, I mean, you go out to where they make a left into Bailey, that's all medical buildings and Bailey Freeman Building, you got the big footbridge to the left, you got dentist offices out there, you got the apartment complexes.
And you would go to a T5 all the way out there? T5N?
Well, you're all commercial on the right side, and so you get to Bailey, all the way out past the lodge, it's all dentist office and doctor's office.
It's all residential, true.
On the left, you have residential, but most of those haven't been, but they've all been converted. You got a tax, you got a tax office, my dentist is there. Those buildings are houses, but they've been converted to commercial.
Right, and there's residential, there are some people...
How about, how about T5N on the north side of Hurley, up there?
See that?
To the, to the thruway.
I mean, T5N is up to three and a half stories, five and a half with bonus. T5 Flex is up to four stories, six with bonus. Parking on the side of the rear. Picks up frontages.
I think T5 would be...
What is, what is the consensus?
I mean, you could do a general to look at it as being either...
So it would be T5 in here, right? Just on this section, and then coming in...
I don't think all the way to the thruway, or are we talking all the way? I thought we were just talking to where it turns here.
Well, that's a question.
And keep this T4NO here, this side, and T5. Where do you want to stop the T5?
Right next to the thruway, you have a big doctor's office. You've got Mickey Ziggler, which is all commercial, the big building next to it's a six unit with a law...
I mean, those are all large parcels here.
Right. But a lot of that is wet behind there.
This is a housing complex here right now. It is wet, that's right.
Yeah. A lot of that on this, the rail, on the rail line is wet.
And this is the entrance to here, this one.
Yeah.
So how far do you want to go out with T5N?
I would just do the whole side of Hurley Avenue on the right.
You think both sides of Hurley Avenue?
No, just the...
Or just to the north? All the way from Washington out to the thruway?
Yeah, I think so.
Just on this side?
Yeah.
I mean, you just approved a big housing complex going.
Well, that's, that's, wouldn't, yeah, that's T2C over there.
That's up here. Everybody agree with that?
Now, what is that, T2C?
It's Conservation District, probably most of it's the wetland.
But doesn't that limit what you can build there? Like, I don't think that, I mean, we just approved...
But that's with the current code.
Yeah, but we just approved that housing complex was going to do all of the...
You can still build in a, in a T2C.
Yeah, and it still allows for multifamily.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, doesn't make it an un-conforming use.
I'm just saying, let's say they don't move forward, and they have a pad sitting there, and then somebody else wants to come in and develop that property, and the pad is still there.
They, you could still develop it, yes.
In the T...
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the design of the buildings might be different under the current code from what was here already, if someone were walking in fresh and developing it. The building types and the architectural types and that things would be different from what it is now.
Would you be able to put multifamily housing in there?
But you would be able to...
Are we done with that part there?
Yeah.
So we're going to Lucas? We're going to Lucas?
Right. So then, with the, from the railroad on the other side of Washington Avenue, from the railroad to Schwenck Drive, that right now is a T4NO.
That's where the bank is.
That's primarily the bank property, yeah. I would say T5N for that.
I agree.
As well.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, moving from Hurley and Schwenck to the North Front Street.
That's CVS and the bus.
On the one side, and on the other side, you have the old Friendly's, beer place now, and you have another office building. My thought is that you go up to where it splits, you know, that triangle kind of, and you come across there, moving T5N. You don't just do the ones that front on Washington, but you have a couple there that, a couple smaller buildings, you have the old firehouse that's been converted, you got the...
Where Black Eyed Susies is.
You have Black Eyed Susies there, yeah. So I think...
After that, then you have the big building, which is Ready Care.
Right. But I know, you gotta, you gotta kind of pull it, where, where, where are you going to stop? You want to stop at, you can stop at Ready Care, Shamrock Lane, whatever it is, I think that's what they call it. I mean, you can stop after that parcel, and then it kind of lines up maybe a little bit better. All right? Okay.
Stopping it here, you mean? Here?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So that would be T5N here?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so then we are moving down from North Front to Lucas. What is your thought there?
I think the right side should be T5N, too, because you have metal building, you I think the right side should be T five N too, because you have metal building, you have a medics building.
I, I agree, okay.
Should the other side be T five M S?
The old, uh, there was a lot of.
What are you talking, T five M S?
Uh, on the west side, yeah.
Oh, there. Um.
You got a feed store in there, you got law offices in there and you go.
I think the main street is kind of your core and then you'd go out, like, so I think if you were going to extend the main street, you know, you might extend it out along North Front Street or.
In the left side, you could do the T five as well, because you've got Luke's, which is Funeral Home, you got Feed Store, you got two properties that are in the process of being redeveloped.
So you think a T five, replace that T, well, Joyce Lane, that whole block with a T five N? And then what about that little corner piece that got plugged in at Joyce and Lucas? I don't know what, what's in there.
This right here?
Yeah.
That's the insurance building. That's the big insurance building.
That's just a house right now.
No, no, right.
There is a house right there.
No, that's the big insurance building.
No, it isn't.
It's next to us.
Right there, that's the insurance building, the T four.
No, it's behind it.
Yeah, we're talking about, oh, wait.
Sorry, my.
Right there, see?
Talking about this.
Yeah.
The insurance.
Insurance is right, is right next to it. That's actually in a special district.
This is a house, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just a house.
Yeah, there's a house there.
Do you think that should go to T three N?
Is it a house or is it like a daycare?
It's a house.
One of these is Testmaster.
I think it's from there though, they just, they just moved the whole new facility.
Yes.
So they moved. I don't know that, I mean, those are residential, that's residential, I'm pretty sure. Unless they wanted to keep, you know, that intersection, they were looking at it as an intersection and not as. The one is a multi-family.
They're both multis.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's gonna be just awkward having that one little piece, but I, I mean, it's, you know, I, I, I'm okay with that for now.
Well, it's kind of attached to Lucas to Lafayette, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So I think we got it. We'll put it on a, in like a little map version for our next meeting and then.
What was the other note that you had there? I don't know, the sheet.
Parking, are we talking about that little sheet?
Yes.
Bullet charge.
Sorry, have it up on my screen there.
Okay, so we'll start, I guess, just at the top. Parking, um, was one of our obvious hot topics. And, um. I think, did the first one stop, at least what Sage wrote, so if you.
I did put hers first because they were front on my. Uh, but I think this lodging thing was talked about everybody last time.
Right, so.
One space or half a space?
Half a space. Lodging have half a space per room with a minimum of.
Be all lodging, bed, breakfast, hotel, short term rental. Lodging is all encompassed there, so. So Lewis talked on one space minimum or two space minimum with point five for each room?
I mean, I'm leaning towards two space, because normally if you have any type of lodging, you have one person that's there that owns it or work. And then if you have at least one person staying there, that's a second car.
Well, lodging includes hotels as well, so you gotta think about that.
Is that?
No, but we're saying two bare minimum.
Right, two minimum plus point five per room, you're saying?
That, that first sentence, should it say with a minimum of two spaces?
Yes, not four. So you feel like two space minimum rather than one space minimum?
We put a lot of discussion with the math.
Yeah.
So what is, what is, any thoughts on that?
That kind of sums up what we talked about.
I agree. I mean, I, I vote for the two spaces minimum, because you got one person working there and then you got somebody showing up. So you're at two before you do anything.
And did it used to say one parking spot per, per room?
In our, in our current code.
Yeah, so we backed away from that.
Right.
You think you need more than that?
No, 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 I said we backed, we backed away from that, but.
Point five.
It was the last way we're down to half.
So you have. Point five spaces per, per room plus two. Is that what you're saying?
No, we're saying point five, but a minimum of two.
Okay.
If you do, if you do a more boarding house, you gotta have two.
Okay.
So if you only do two rooms and it's point five, point five, you still gotta have two.
Okay, I got you, okay.
Actually, boarding houses are separate.
I'm just.
But if you do wanna talk about that, that's not included in this.
What did we?
Well, it would be under the residential housing, I suppose. So, but.
So if you had a five room bed and breakfast, it would be two and a half spaces.
So it is four.
Not with, what? No, with a minimum of two spaces. Right?
Yeah, so if you only have one room, you still need the two, but if you have five, it's interesting.
Right, so it's two, right, okay. We have to figure out how to word that, so it's weirder.
It's just point five spaces per room, minimum two.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the floor.
Okay. Okay, residential housing.
And we talked about with that, you know, stacking cars in the driveway, right?
Allowing stacking cars?
Did it, did it allow for that?
To be counted.
I would say you can only stack two cars at max.
If you're, if you're a single family residential home, I don't have an issue with stacking cars at all. I mean, it's, you know.
Just if you're driving, just put one in front of the other.
Okay, just on top of the center.
Yeah, but that's, we've got to have a minimum for stacking, because you think most of the residential houses in Kingston. Have a garage in the backyard. So if somebody comes to the planning board and says, I want to, looks at the codes, says I wanna put accessory dwelling unit or I wanna put four units in the building, they can't say, well, I can fit six cars stacked, so therefore I can put this in my building. Well, no, no one's gonna stack six cars, because no one's gonna move six cars.
Accessory dwelling, dwelling, parking.
That's the, that's the conversation.
Well, there's a three car maximum there too.
That was, that was a suggestion.
Well, that was a suggestion, but that, that's my point. We gotta figure out, are we doing two max, three max? I, I would.
Because it was also in the discussion, I think, was we had the definition of front yard, right? Where you're inherently not supposed to park in your front yard. So did we do away with that entirely or?
I don't think that got carried through, no. They don't have any parking in the front yard.
But I'm just looking at my parents' house, they have a two car.
Side of the rear.
They could put like ten cars in their driveway stacked.
You know, I think.
And then all those cars would fall back out in the street.
People wanna stack six cars in a long driveway. I don't have an issue with it, because.
But they're not going to. My practical is if somebody comes in for a multi-family, they're gonna say I can stack six, but all those six are coming out the street. If you don't have a minimum.
You can't, and you can have somebody that has a driveway and can fit four cars that can maneuver independently and they can still park on the street.
Yeah, but this isn't the building.
Somebody to park in a parking on, on their property, you can't force them. If there's legal parking on the street.
No, I understand, but this provision, what is this provision for? Single family house or multi-family?
Well, right now it's residential housing. It would be.
So that's my point. We're, I'm not really worried about the single family housing. I'm worried about the conversions of the single family housing.
Too worried about a six unit saying, oh, I, I have enough parking, because I can fit 12 cars in my driveway, but they're all 12 are lined up right.
And then all those 12 are gonna go out into the neighborhood, which defeats the purpose of having a parking regulation.
Listen, if you have a parking area like me, I would have the street out there for stolen, have people on the street parking, you know, get off the road. So do we want to define what, what we, with the residential housing, what, what we're talking about?
I mean, somebody has a parking on their backyard, then.
I think, well, I think we, are we talking about, I mean, do, do you wanna talk about this being applicable to multi-family? I don't know what we were really focusing on. The multi-family, we were talking about the one, two, and three family homes. I don't, I mean, I think for multi-family, that's where you're gonna get into that parking strategy, that demand, um, model that will have to be presented, um, by applicants. And the board, there's thresholds, um, for that, but if the board, if they don't meet that threshold, any of those, either of the thresholds that are established already in the code, the board can still require that that parking demand reduction strategy be followed. And that's where they have to show that, you know, they, this is what their demand is and this is how they feel they're going to address it.
I do think that our, like you said, our discussions those, that night was just encompassing the one, two, three family.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you wanna get involved with doing it for the multis. I mean, they're, like, like, you know, you have a developer like we, we have in front of us now with Smith Avenue and, um, you know, he, he doesn't have, you know, the total number of spaces that he needs under the code, but he, you know, he's even said, he's not gonna put absolutely zero on his site, because he knows he needs. I mean, developers know intrinsically.
I'm not worried about developers in large scale projects. I'm worried about conversion of single family homes into two, three, four, five units and what the parking's going to do to the neighborhood. That's my concern.
So what if we just talk about one, two, and three family first and then talk about four or more in the parking demand section?
Just goes back to your house across the street.
Street, right. Should we, because the parking, that would then have to come, anything over three family would have to come to the planning board.
Right, right.
So that could then trigger a. Parking demand discussion.
Please.
We can do that.
Three family.
Well, we could talk about them separately. One, two, one, two, and three right now and, I mean.
How many car, how many, how much parking do you want for a three family?
You have a three, it depends on where it is. I mean, if you have a three family and, you know, I mean, that's hot.
I mean, a three family, you have a minimum of six cars.
Yep.
I mean, there's, there's four family across the street from us and I think, and they have a huge parking area in the back and I think there are three cars in there whenever I go by there.
Is that Charlie's old place?
And there's nobody on the street in front. So I'm just saying.
And my parents have a single family house across the street from them and they've got four outdoor bins for four cars.
And that's, I think, you know, I, you know, that's.
Each that. People with children have more cars, people without have less. People, some people have business vehicles. I mean, I don't know what you think is.
No, but I mean, you have a three family that's got three, I mean, technically a three family could have what? Two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Well, I mean, I think if you did one space minimum per.
Unit?
Unit. I don't know that I would put a maximum. I mean, I don't, I don't even think, I don't know. I think it's.
One parking space minimum per unit?
Organically, anyway.
One, can we agree on that? One parking space minimum per unit?
I would also say that parking and any car escape will be included in the lot coverage maximums.
Right.
So when you get into the neighborhoods, uh, you know, like T three N or whatever, there's a maximum lot coverage. So if you have, you go for large driveways or, you know, big garages, things like that, it all counts towards lot.
What about the stack, your, like, your house, you actually have more cars.
Yeah, you're not gonna get a little tiny stacks. Right, so there would be.
Do we wanna talk about the stacking? Do, do we need to?
I don't know that we need to do stacking. I mean, that's a, that's a function of, they wanna, they wanna stack vehicles, they can stack vehicles.
But if, if we're requiring them to have, if it's a three family and they're required to have three parking spaces, that's not, not including stacking?
It could include stacking.
I think, I think we shouldn't include stacking. All right, I see, okay.
Houses.
So maybe stacking twos.
Are they, is, is the front yard gonna be defined in this new code too? Like you can't?
Well, I like what Kylie said with the coverage of the lot.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that the lot coverage is for certain neighborhoods.
They will say you're not allowed.
But you're not, you can't park in the front yard.
You can't park in the front, yeah, no, side or rear.
So can we say where we can, we would allow stacking?
I assume lot coverage is 50%. That includes.
That's parking.
That includes any outdoor service. Patios, yeah, it could include a pool, ways, a pool, anything.
So if a house doesn't have a driveway and they want to add another unit, that just wouldn't, they couldn't add another unit?
Without parking.
So they'd have to, they'd have to have a driveway?
If you're gonna put, if you're putting this minimum in.
If you put the minimum in, no, they have to ask for variance.
So I have a house next to me that's a two family and there's no space on that property for a driveway. So they would, obviously, they.
Right.
Their grandfather did, but they wouldn't be performing.
Right.
Take stacking out. You need to add that language in there? You know, because it's still gonna say you can't park in your front yard, just how they get to that maximum, you know?
I agree.
Okay.
I mean, are there neighborhoods where there are, there are lots of houses with no driveways?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we just wanna tell them, you cannot add.
Yeah, that's why I'm.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't agree with that.
Well, I mean, that's how it's doing right now too, so. If you wanna go from one family to a two, you need to provide off-street parking.
All right, well, what is the pleasure?
This is just a recommendation.
Yeah, I think that if you don't agree.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't agree, obviously.
Okay, well, what we're gonna do tonight is just kind of lay these things out, then we're gonna set up another meeting and then that, we're gonna go through, go back to my point and.
Oh, I understand that.
And, you know, and speaking, all right? So it'll be regular, it will be voted on at a regular meeting, okay? All right, so are we taking the stacking out? We're taking, we, at this point, we agree on taking the stacking out?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, now we had in there a maximum. Are we taking the maximum out? We are taking the max out.
Because that's covered under.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the next bullet there is residential with ADUs should be.
Well, you should, so one parking space minimum per unit or just one parking space minimum, that's it?
Oh, per unit, right.
Yeah, that was per unit. Yeah, that's what you said. Okay, so good catch, thank you. Residential with ADUs should be required to have two parking spaces minimum. With three max. with three max.
Now, with ADUs.
ADUs do not require parking now, right now, or the code is ADUs do not have to have a parking space. And I'm okay with that because ADUs typically are the smaller units and they're geared towards, you know, individuals that in more cases than not would not have vehicles. I mean, I, I'm okay with that. If the residential.
No, necessarily.
Component.
I don't agree with that.
Are ADUs only going to be for one-family houses, then you're going to be getting two-family, three, with an ADU?
Yes.
We live in the Northeast. Most people have a car. The majority of people have a car, so an ADU is an affordable way to live in the city of Kingston, and it allows you to have housing, but most likely that person's going to have a car. You start stacking ADUs in the city, you start, you're stacking cars in the city, which goes back to the parking issue.
Should we say that the, that the ADU shall be required to have a parking spot, a parking space? Just say that? That if you're going to have an ADU, that ADU needs, needs a.
I don't, I think it has to go, again, amongst districts. I mean, if you're in a residential neighborhood, you should have to have a parking space. If you're uptown Kingston where none of the houses even have parking, again, with a lot of them have basement apartments where those are considered ADUs. I don't know. I don't know.
So ADUs that are established in which transects? Is that, you want to do it like that?
I would say if you, if you're in some of these residential neighborhoods with bigger lots, you got to provide parking.
Okay, well, let's look at the transect map. I mean, if you want to pick out your, your transects.
What does everybody else think?
Where's my comment?
We're in the T's, there's two, and.
Yeah, that's, that's with the, all right.
Your proposal is that they should.
Yeah.
I, I mean, my parents live on Harding Avenue. Somebody was parked in front of their house, wasn't that? And then the neighbor across the street came over and parked in front of his house, and a car literally came down the street and had to honk and horn because they couldn't get through. A car on the left and a car on the right, you couldn't go down the street with a truck. UPS truck was sitting there honking and whirring, hoping somebody would come out and change. I mean, the city does not have wide streets and tons of parking. Uptown, the last snowstorm, there were towing cars left and right, and all the people up there were like, what are we supposed to do with our car? Where do we take our car? We don't even have parking for these cars.
We did talk about the T3N transect, that we used to have the parking per unit, you know?
I mean, I think, I think your T3 transect has to have parking.
Can you pull up the T and the whole T?
I mean, your, your, your T4s. You know, you just look at the overall city, some of the T4 neighborhoods and, you know, they're tight neighborhoods to begin with, because a lot of them are two and three families to begin with. They don't have, I mean, a lot of the T4 neighborhoods don't even have driveways.
So we, I said, we did include T3N, I thought, what are, what are, what are the neighborhood transects? Should we say the lot, lot ones too?
I mean, T3L should definitely have it.
And what about the T4Ns? Through Downstreet?
Yeah, I mean, my concern is the T4Ns, a lot of them are two and three and four families that have been converted since the 60s. They're struggling with parking as it is. Start adding units, you're going to have parking issues.
Conconkey? Let's see, over in the.
First, Second, Third Avenue, small streets.
Over through Hunter Street that way.
You're a firefighter, those streets are narrow.
Mm-hmm. Issues.
I'm on First Avenue.
Yeah.
Some of my neighbors already don't have driveways. The ones across the street, they must have, you know, they all park on the street halfway on the driveway. Have issue with enough cars where I'm blocked from the street.
But if all those houses started adding accessory dwelling units?
I mean, I think eventually, if that happens, you're probably going to see the common council adopting alternate side parking or one side only parking. That'll end up being a, you know, it becomes an issue of safety.
If we say T3N, T3L, T4N, that, that covers a lot of the city.
T4N?
T4N, I can go back and forth on. The other ones I think should be able to provide. I don't think you're going to be able to provide the T4N.
Definitely.
Those lots aren't big enough.
T3N and T3L?
Mm-hmm.
How does everybody feel about that?
You could just blanket all the T3s. Maybe just in all the, you know, we just said everything of the T3s.
Yeah.
Across the board.
Yeah, I mean, you don't pick, yeah, just anything in.
You just do all the T3s across the board and say anything, you know, within accessory dwelling.
Right.
The T3s across the board needs to provide a parking space.
And what about the T4s?
Uh, do you?
I think a lot of them just, they're not going to be able to do that.
I know, just they're going to be able to have a parking, ADUs.
Yeah.
I would agree with you. And even, you know, a lot of those, the lots are smaller. You, you, again, you got to go back to thinking about the lot coverage restrictions.
That's going to take care of it.
It's going to, it's going to rain.
I agree with you.
So I think if we cover with the T3s, then I think that.
So ADUs in T3s is what we're down to now?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the parking.
For parking. Now, we're talking two spaces or one space? I, I mean.
I floated the notion before about need at least one.
They have to have one space for each unit already, and then one space for the ADU.
Yeah, it's no different, right, yeah.
And how big are these ADUs? One bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom?
No. It depends.
Fifty percent maximum size, and then attached ADU is 1,000 square feet that's attached. ADU shall be less than 50% of the footage of the primary unit. Maximal size.
Just give one space.
Detached ADU is 1,000 square feet.
I'd say one for the main building, one for the ADU. In the T4s.
Well, if you have, you already have one for, for the residents. You've already written that in your, in your other portion of your recommendations.
But you may have, what if, what if a house comes to you pre-existing, doesn't have parking?
They'd need to provide a parking spot for the ADU.
For the ADU. But if they come to us and they say, well, I have a driveway that's in the front of my house, and I park my one car in front of that driveway, they can't provide the second spot for the ADU, correct? Is that how it works? From practical standpoint?
You can park it on the street in front of the driveway?
No, I think he means park.
Let's say you have a house.
Right.
A driveway, one car sits in the driveway.
Uh-huh.
That house comes and says, I want to build an ADU in the back. If the one car is in the driveway and that's all they have, they can't have the ADU because they can't provide the second parking space, correct?
No, well, no, and if you require it without going for variance.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand it because.
Yeah.
Or can the owner say, well, I park in the street, so my driveway is going to be used for the ADU?
No, well, that, I mean, that's something else that's being discussed, whether on-street parking is going to be able to be considered, but that has not made it into the code yet.
Okay. So we're saying two spots for an ADU in the T3 zones, because one's for a house lot.
One spot.
One for the ADU. I wrote T3s, just the T3s.
I wrote residential with ADUs in the T3 district should, should be required to have one space per unit plus one space per ADU.
Okay?
Just spaces.
All right.
Does that sound?
Okay.
Um, you went with T3 districts for that, just going back to the comment before about.
So the two, the two T3s, right?
What?
The N and the L. Right, T3?
Three, three, I think so. Any T3s.
We just did T3s, just a transect three.
There's T3, I know.
Okay, got a question.
So I just wanted to go back to that one before this. The one, two, and three family residential housing should have one space minimum per unit. Are you talking all districts or are you talking only certain districts?
Because we, it wasn't such a residential rate.
Yeah, the one that, the, what we just talked about before, the ADUs.
Well, what transects do we want to include in that?
I don't know, I didn't know.
Well, that's what she's asking.
That's right, that's right.
If you want to.
It's just.
I mean, if you're very specific, then all. Well, I guess one, two, and three family. We haven't gotten down to the parking demand for.
Larger, right.
Yeah, we just said for all, because wherever the one, two, or three family is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's how you want it, I just want to make sure.
Okay. So what was in this?
I had parking.
It's the same. That was the same thing.
Yeah.
Can you switch back to that screen?
Yes, I can. We talked about on-street parking regulations. Actually, Robert brought this up, and so did Andrew. Right, about. Forget exactly what your comment was, about on-street parking. It was something about on-street parking, right?
Obviously, just that, just that we should kind of look at the regulations.
About what's.
Yeah.
About whether alternate sides or something like that.
I didn't get that, I didn't get that in depth, no.
Just to think about.
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking about two-family houses next to yours. It has no, no street parking.
Yeah, so. I mean, my shoe has parking, like, just cars on both sides.
On the street.
Yeah, yeah.
And Robert brought this up last time about cars being able to just sit on the street or.
That's becoming a problem uptown. People are parking cars, and they're becoming flowerpots.
Just staying there.
They don't.
I mean, this will necessarily be in the zoning code, but it could be something that's just a recommendation to the common council to think about.
Right, I think, another, it's, point, Kyle and I just found this out the other day that we, we were both not aware of. If you have a dead-end street in the city of Kingston, there is no on-street parking allowed.
On it, really?
Yeah, we, we did not know that. It's in the code, it's in the city code. It was told us the other day.
So you don't want to force it?
No.
No, that's fair. They're having problems, and that's part of the problem, is they get, their trucks get down.
I think you're saying anywhere from where another cross street is.
Yeah, so like, anything with a cul-de-sac is technically a dead-end street.
It probably comes from the need to plow both, you know, and do a turnaround and come back.
What's just a transect dead-end street, yeah?
The one portion of it, yeah.
Right, so.
The portion of it. Oh, I suppose, huh?
Wow, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Leisure news, huh? We're fucked up. You're out of that.
Yeah, but Conkey, Conkey Street's dead.
Right.
The dead-end Conkey, yeah, so.
Yeah, I just keep them.
We did not know that, but, but, anyway.
Does anyone have anything to add to this?
But I think, though, that we have that, I mean, these cars can't stay there, so I guess the question is, I mean, did parking enforcement people need tools in order to move these cars?
Well, I think Kyle made a comment earlier.
Alternate side parking.
I don't know if the common council is going to go for that, because that's an enforcement mechanism, that then you have the police involved with alternate side and ticketing. But I think that if you have an issue where it's reported to the parking enforcement division, then they should be able to track, you know, a car, paint the street, chalk it, whatever, see if cars don't move after so many days that, then they can tow them.
A car should be able to sit in a spot for five days or something, but then it should have to move.
It's probably more of an issue in uptown where it's a commercial district. Like, if my neighbor across the street didn't move their car for.
Well, it just goes back to the city being able to, I mean, let, you know, street sweeping, cleaning sewers. I mean, you look at Fair Street, technically, the one side of Fair Street, people don't realize the sewer's not in the center of the street because there were railroad tracks. Sewer is actually where the parked cars are. So DBDW comes up to clean a street, and all of a sudden, there's a car on top of a mammal. We've got a car that, person, it doesn't technically run, so it keeps getting towed from spot to spot to spot, but it's registered.
Yeah, I don't know. We could, we could suggest looking into that. I don't know what the.
No, I just think it should be a suggestion that there should be some parking enforcement and, and, and limits on the on-street parking.
How would you word it then?
I would say that all on-street parking. I would say any cars parked on-street can be parked for a maximum period of.
Okay.
Then get back to the enforcement.
Well, the thing is, if somebody complains, if a neighbor complains, then enforcement can look at it and start to clock. Because, because there's a rule, there's a law in the books. You're not expecting to monitor every car every day, where somebody says, hey, this car's been here for a month. All right, well, we'll start looking at it every day. If it doesn't move in five days, oh, gone. And then be required to move to it.
I mean, if you park in front of your house, and then you leave, and then you come back and park in front of your house.
That's, again, that's for parking enforcement to figure out. But we know that there's cars that aren't moving, and when they have this much dirt and dust on them, because they don't move, required to relocate to a different parking spot. Can't drive around the block and park in the same spot. I mean, in fairness, you have a lot of neighborhoods in downtown and uptown that people don't have parking spots. So in order to do work, have workmen, to have deliveries, you know, they, cars have to be able to move and rotate in so that an owner can say, well, somebody's parked in front of my house, oh, well, but as the person moves, they may go out and move back closer to their house for deliveries or whatever they have. But if you just park a car in front of somebody's house forever, it's not fair to the homeowner to say, you know, how long is it going to be here?
Okay.
You're, you're encouraging cycle.
So the next bullet there is parking demand thresholds. Is that the strategy? Is that it?
Yeah.
That's, that's, okay. So in, like I said, in the, in the code, there's what they call the parking demand reduction strategy. So my first thing is that we remove the word reduction out of there. Parking demand strategy is, I think, what the title should be. Right now, the thresholds are that it is required for all major site plan projects where the principal, that include a principal dwelling, which is a single building footprint of 10,000 square feet or greater, or a total gross floor area that exceeds 50,000 square feet. So my question to the board is, I know, my thought is that those thresholds are too high. I think the footprint should be reduced from 10,000. I had anywhere between 5 and 7, 5 and 7.5, where this strategy would be required. Okay, so 5. And then with the total gross floor area, they have 50,000 square feet. I mean, we don't see that realistically. You know, that's kind of like saying, why even put it in there? Because we very rarely see something like that. So on a, you know, on a gross floor area, I would say, I, I had 10, but I still, I think that's a little low for gross. If you've got a footprint of 5, I would probably go to 20 there.
What's a CVS or a.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but they're probably, they might be around 12. Do you want to hear on 12? Footprint-wise?
Wait, how does that, how does that say that again?
So it's the footprint of... 5, 1.38. Another thing, this, another thing that has been pointed out is that, and this has already been proposed at a council session. It was discussed that... Language, because this only says major site plan, but that provision, that the strategy could be requirement for major site plan by a majority vote of the planning board. So if you get a project that doesn't fall into these thresholds, let's say it's in an area where, like, if you're in the Rondo, and you know that there's already parking constraints down there, you could still, by a majority vote of the planning board, require the developer to undertake the strategy. So I think that that, and that's being discussed, but I think that the board should endorse that as well.
I agree.
I don't know if anybody had anything else. I had some other words, things that I can throw into a final recommendation, but they're minor.
You know if the city's looking into doing any type of payment in lieu of parking, too?
There is. There is, it's in here. The council has to set up the criteria yet, and that has not been done.
Because there's some of this valley that looks like it has something, but I don't know what they're...
Right, it goes in, it would be a kind of payment.
But is that going to be for small things or big things?
There's no criteria developed yet.
Well, maybe we could make a recommendation on that. Because I mean, I don't, I mean, if somebody's going to put an accessory dwelling in, they don't need it, and they say, oh, just, you know, I'll write a $500 check, no big deal. What is the point?
Where is that? I read it today, but I'll be darned if I can remember where it is. I can, I can pull that out and get that to you, but it's...
Can we say like six units or more, or units or more, 10 units or more?
Or 6, 8.
Pay to play.
Think off the top of your head, is that, is that good for this payment? Going to be even more important? You've published the current parking lot, so you have to park there. You don't, I mean, if you can't find it right now, that's, I'm just going to keep it up.
So if you have an ADU, and you only need parking, pay for that spot. It requires you to have a parking spot.
Yeah. Which pay to play? People are supported, get what they want, see what they can afford. Fair.
All right, is there any other thoughts on parking issues or concerns?
But that's, you don't have to read that.
Well, I want to find it, I'll get it to you and send it to you.
But I mean, what is your thought on that? I mean, should it be for like... And I don't think that every house in Kingston that wants an ADU should be able to just pay to have a fee.
No, I don't think so.
I mean, I would say like 8 units or more, if they can meet the parking demand.
Again, I don't know what criteria they're, I mean, they haven't even proposed anything yet. I don't know.
Maybe, maybe it could encompass, like, for now, what we know is secure proximity to a city or a lot. If you can feed the deal, you get that requirement. Maybe that could be addressed with a payment to the parking there. So, see, to get some money.
To maintain a parking lot.
To maintain a parking lot.
Yeah, I'm good with all that, I just don't want to see in the T4, just discuss, all of a sudden, people, you know, when you're in the T4, people are going to say, oh, you know. Check them out. That's not fair.
And one other thing about parking, standalone lots are going to be allowed for... Uh... Primary use?
No.
No?
Only maybe in certain districts.
Only in certain districts, yeah. There's very few.
Finally found the wording. I think that's a good point, though. If you're, if you're in a main street area or a place that uses municipal parking, that, that, that's some...
What are the...
Those people are also paying to park in those lots, too.
Here it is, it's on page 4.50. Oh, you know what, I think you would have... It's housing. Sorry.
Certain parts of being is allowed by special permit in almost all districts. So it's allowed as a primary use, but only by special permit. Parking structures are allowed in some districts by special permit.
Good, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
Okay.
On parking?
Okay. Did you say gross floor area, what, 10,000?
Yeah, 10,000. Okay. Need a change? Okay. So the waterfront, special district waterfront. That first, this first one was submitted. And the second one, I think, was something that we talked about.
So the second one would be, you could have a 3.5 thing, right? You're going to put parking underneath.
So I think we talked at one meeting, it was asked whether or not parking underneath the structure counted towards the...
A story. And it was story, I think it was, right?
Correct.
Right, whether it counts. So it does not count if you're in the flood zone. Right?
Right.
But it does count if you're not.
Right.
So that doesn't mean that, but that type of building could be 4.5 with...
It does mean that if you're in a flood zone, you have a, you could have a whole story of parking, plus...
So basically, you could build a house on stilts. Your first floor is really on the second floor, your second is on the third. You're going to end up with, so you're really going to be blocking people's views. With the concern about somehow something hill.
And then Sage, your comment was because you thought that the current was too high?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the current is, is up to 4.5. So we don't have any...
It would be a 5-story building.
Yeah.
That's what you tested. Let's see.
You're going to...
Now, I handle the steelhouse, be considered.
You have big grate?
Yeah.
Oh, it's up to 5.
Which building?
Steel house.
That's 3, 3.5.
Maybe a 3-story building.
I would say steelhouse is probably 4. By the time you get up into the tower, at least. I mean, you figure where you're eating, there's a pair of stairs as well to the balcony. And then above the balcony is the wood timbers, which would be a 3. And then probably the copper would be like a 4.
Because I guess across the street, those apartments are 3-story, right? 2-story plus the man-curve is a whole story.
SD waterfront is the whole length of the street.
SD is SD waterfront and SD waterfront mixed use. There's two districts. Height?
Do you need that T back?
So in the waterfront mixed use, E-strand height overlay has a 4 max. And... Potential bonus height of 2 more. So E-strand height overlay would be potentially 6.
Which section is the height overlay, this section?
That's...
That's...
Yeah.
E-strands?
There it is, okay. So the one that just highlighted, that's the E-strand height overlay. So that potentially could go up to 6 stories. 4 allowed with 2 bonus. And then the affordable housing bonus.
And that still provides for the promenade, too?
Yeah.
So what's our thoughts on that?
That's a fair...
Well, that's why, that's why, one of the reasons it, originally, it went down all the way. So Pankakee, the people in Pankakee really came out vocally against allowing those heights there, which is why it was cut back. It's not, doesn't, E-strand doesn't follow all the way to the end.
The only, the only folks that would be obstructed would be those who were up on Copasra Park, then, right?
Uh, yeah, right, the people like at the garden up there. But I think you've got the museum there. I don't envision them going higher, but...
Well, these would be...
Yeah, those would be in fact...
These would be blocked anyway, though. With, right, even with a 2-story, right? I mean, they would be...
Yeah.
But there's, there's kind of, is there a lot of blocking right there now?
I would think so.
What's the way? Think about it.
I don't know, the upper ones, my, you know, the ones that are higher up on that, in that complex, probably, no. But I mean, other than that, I don't think, you know, you don't really have much. I mean, you've got the Charlie Museum, the treatment plan. The only residential that you are going to block in that oak, from that overlay, are the townhouses there. And if they build something on that open area across from the Maritime Museum, that would potentially be blocked. Views from that, you know, views to the Rondo Creek.
What is that? Because did we, we talked about what that should be, right? This piece over here?
Whether that should be...
We were talking about...
Yeah.
Whether it should be main street or not?
Right. So that's the comments there. What are people's thoughts on that?
How high is, can it be in that E-strand height overlay?
What?
How high can it be, the proposed 6?
Ultimately 6. If, yeah.
I can find that, because all you really have is a sewer plant, the Charlie Museum. I mean, steelhouse is a huge building, but Cornell Building next was a huge building, so...
Well, then you've got the rest of the, the rest of the waterfront could be...
Yeah, but they're not, you got the...
3 plus 1 bonus. And then there's an accessory building height limit, but that's a separate building. That's 2.5.
So these red could be 3 plus 1.
Right.
So our comment originally was 2.5 with a 3.5 bonus?
Well, Sage submitted that, I don't, did we talk about, did we talk about that during the meeting? Is that what you had?
Well, we talked about, we thought the parking underneath should be 1 story.
Okay.
Because we were questioning the code, because we're like, we don't want to go 4 and 5 stories. We want to go 3 max.
Right, that's true.
So parking counts, it's really should only be 2.
So you're saying 6 with parking underneath could technically be 7?
Mm-hmm.
And these other ones are 4, but with parking underneath could be 5, right?
5 stories, it's huge.
I mean, you could say if, you could say if parking is provided underneath, then the bonus height is limited to 1 story. But if you don't have parking underneath, that you keep it.
Well, we're in a flood zone for these lots, so most likely, someone's going to build something on stilts.
Uh, they could build a building that is flood-proofed, that is, you know, allows water, like, you know, just to go right through it. I mean, well, that's...
I just worry about somebody building up and already getting... 1 story.
Is the bonus height or then the additional units, is that for affordable housing?
Yes.
Because I was thinking a bonus for parking underneath, you know, like, you're lowering it.
Like, change for whatever one it's...
I mean, we could word it that. Maximum height, including the parking underneath.
Or just the building in that zone could be a maximum height of 5. There's definitely a lot. So when you're on stilts, you know stilts, parking around, and no parking around, this is as tall as you can go.
How big, how tall do you want it?
Can bonus height be said to...
What's a story consider?
Parcels in...
A residential house is 2.5.
The SDW and transits, maybe eligible for bonus height up to the limits identified based on the provision of affordable housing units. Gross floor area equal to or greater than 50% of each conditional story, and at least 20% of the total number of units shall be provided in a development project for affordable housing units. Parcels in the SDW and MU zone may be also eligible for a bonus height up to the limits identified based on the provision of public usable open space as approved by the planning board. So it's not only in this waterfront, it's not only affordable housing, but open space, usable open space. And it goes on to define, develop, construction, dedicate, public usable open space with a parcel dimension not less than 5,000 square feet, and the usable open space is publicly accessible, privately maintained, and the usable open space meets the standards set in Section 4024, and the total footprint of the bonus area shall be equal to 1.5 times the area of the public usable open space.
I think whatever height we come up with, I think we should include the language in there that a lot of our discussions revolved around the views that folks would be able to see from different sections of it.
And also waterfront access, right?
Waterfront access, but I mean, there's a lot of our discussions about the view.
Really, district allow you to do residential housing or no?
Yes. Like, this question, does it allow for residential housing?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's, the bonus is for...
Right.
To provide affordable housing. So there's two ways. In the waterfront district, you can give your bonus height two different ways. You can provide affordable housing if you need certain criteria, or if you provide public access and usable open space.
What I'm saying, just in general, like, just a single-family house, can you put a single-family house?
You can put it in the SDW and U.
Yep.
Single families could do all that.
See, why doesn't it show SD?
I'm just thinking like, Surry Street, we got a house.
Why is it so...
I'm just thinking of Surry Street.
Yeah, yeah.
But he took, is it, if he took the light, can he take one out? To see what happens with the...
No, I don't think, I don't know. I didn't do that. Because SDWS... Because SDW MU allows for dwelling units, but SDW doesn't. But it doesn't really show you.
SDW is written as to allow bi-rite waterfront dependent uses along the Rondell Creek waterfront. An overlay for waterfront mixed use is applicable to this area.
You know, but the mansion is.
It's one, they're the same, they're one of the same.
There's a, there's a separate color on what the point going up there is, right?
I think that's just because it's over the water. It's just more topical blue.
All right, so let's come to a agreement on what height we want, would like to see.
The waterfront mixed use district is an overlay that may be approved by major site plan in the SW district. The intent is to allow for walkable mixed use destination district. So everything in the SD waterfront mixed use is major site plan by the planning board.
Uh, so if you want to do any of those uses?
Yep.
Residential, hotel.
Major site plan.
So the talking point that you had up there?
Commercial.
The three, three and a half with the bonus, that was part, that was a discussion here, right? That was sort of, the consensus seemed to be.
That was something Sage submitted, but I think that was based on.
It was based on a discussion that we did, we were, we talked about it.
So do we want to go back and also include any other building parking as part of that three and a half? But that's for the bonus, that's bonus? Or just three and a half max? Or let's go bonus?
Just make it.
If you want to allow for a bonus in that height overlay to, it does encourage public open space.
Well, if you go with the three and a half, I wasn't, I mean, if you go with the three and a half, make the half the the parking underneath and just go three stories. I, I I don't like the idea of going five or six stories.
Is a roof, is a rooftop public space like they did at Revco building, is that considered a story? Like I say, no.
No.
I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm good with three stories and a rooftop, like, you know, open garden or whatever residents can use.
Right, but that's not, that's not the bonus thing. I mean, bonus is for public usable open space. That would be private.
An actual structure, I'm okay with three-story height. If you're going with a structure up to four stories, I don't mind people on top of a three-story and maybe like a little cabana, like, you know, like uptown has a bar on the roof, but you want to see like a four-story box, because that's going to block out a lot of views.
Would maybe that fourth story be the bonus? And hey, if you want to go four stories, you need to let the public have access to your waterfront?
Oh, that won't work. Because they'll make it self-difficult to, to people.
Oh, no, no, I don't mean, I, yeah, I don't, I don't mean as publicly accessible at the top. It's just, that's how you get that extra story.
You provide that on your property elsewhere, you have your view, you let them along the waterfront, you create, you know, an area there or.
Don't we already have to do that?
Well, that was, that's only from 9W.
Are we not blocking?
Because that's, that's the only part of the promenade, yes.
We had the requirement, we heard about the requirement.
Promenade.
Create usable open space. Is that still in there or is that?
But the promenade is not.
That's one and that's how it is.
The promenade is not required from Wilbur to.
And that was only required when it wasn't a water dependent use, you know?
Right.
Wasn't required every property. Now.
It was, it was an incentive. It was, uh, you're allowed to do these extra uses if you provide waterfront public access.
So I don't know, are we talking about two stories and then the third being the bonus, or are we talking about no bonus?
No, all three stories. Those will all play.
I'm just saying a three-story, you got one story, you do whatever you want, and the second story you do whatever you want, third story with a roof, and then you can go on top of the roof of the three-story building, so I don't know if that's called four, whatever, but that's like open outside space, maybe a tree or plants or whatever, but I, but the actual brick and mortar, three stories.
Including the parking underneath?
Nah.
We might not allow an increased height.
I mean, I could go with the parking underneath, I mean, a four-story building is not going to be any bigger than.
And a three and a half. Like we, that was discussed, that was your proposal, three and a half.
Yeah.
I think on the waterfront, it does make some sense to allow parking underneath.
Because the waterfront command.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
It makes more sense than I.
I mean, a four-story building, which, you know, I think is, I mean, look, sewer plants, four stories, you probably got Steel House and, and Cornell Building, probably like five or six by the time you really measured it out. Used to have Costco tanks that were gigantic. They were probably five or six stories, so I'm thinking four stories.
Too with the, the type of, the building types that would be allowed in, in the waterfront. You got the main street building, you got that flex building, you got the liner building, you've got live-work buildings, stacked flats, courtyard building, multiplex, small multiplex, corner store and row houses. So some of those by nature are, you know, three-story type structures already.
I mean, I'm also not opposed to having, I don't know what that, what's that first street in Pankakee?
Where?
Hill Street.
Tompkins?
Oh, the first street is, uh, Tom, Tom, Hill Street.
I mean, I'm not opposed to going from Tompkins back to 9W and having a higher building, because the only thing behind you is the hill with Hasbro Park.
But that's what it is.
That's that overlay.
That's where it is. That overlay only goes from that first street to 9W.
But we're, but, yes, but we're talking about the rest of.
Of what?
But we were talking about the rest of.
E strand?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or it's that, to that.
I mean, I'm okay with that being higher, but for the people in Pankakee, I think it should be a maximum of four.
From Tompkins over to.
From Tompkins out to the point.
And then from.
Well, okay, so Tompkins out to the point is three stories with a one-story bonus.
Anything outside of the E strand height.
With certain use, again, it, this is split between types of uses, so if it's an SDW use, it's two and a half story max with no bonus height. If it's an S D W M U use, it's a three-story max with a one-story bonus. So it's four stories going where the red is up.
But they could park underneath, which could bump it up to a five-story.
Right, right.
That's what I, that's what we're having trouble with.
Can, can we say that that parking counts as a story? Is that a change that we can implement?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, right, that's what I'm trying to say.
So let's make that, we're.
So where parking is underneath, it should be counted as a story, no matter if it's in the waterfront or anywhere else in the city.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Outside of the E strand, the height overlay.
Well, outside it already is. So in other words, it's only not counted in the waterfront as a story. And I think the reason for that is really to encourage it to be built that way, because of the flooding.
The only thing about that though, is that you're then pushing the parking, someone's creating parking in that district, then they're creating like surface parking.
Right.
Around a building, which is less desirable than encouraging parking in a building. You know?
But, but if they did that, the building itself would have to be, they're in a flood zone, so they're going to have to be, to a certain extent, they're in a flood zone, so they're going to have to, they're likely going to use parking underneath because who's going to throw all the money into a building that's going to flood?
But again, our, our discussion is mainly centered around how will that affect people's views on the waterfront?
Well, views and waterfront accessibility.
Yeah.
You don't have to be on the water to have it accessible. A lot of people like to ride along, see the lighthouse, look out.
Yeah. Oh, I'd. But they'll have that, they'll have that promenade, it's just.
Yeah, but that's.
Does that make sense for Tom?
I think so. Uh, but should we check to see if the public access to the waterfront is still included, and if it's not?
Yeah.
It should be included, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you want to encourage public access.
Promenade in public?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I think it, it might still be in here, but I don't.
They had that Miami Beach.
Public access.
They had, they had that promenade, went right up to one beach, the whole length of the beach and all the hotels and everything. Find it with their fences and their doors with the codes, everybody could walk in by.
It's extremely, yeah.
I think it was lovely.
Yeah, yeah.
Our hardware.
It was nice, yeah.
And, you know, I mean, unfortunately with the Rondell, you know, I, I think it would be really well received. It's just the narrowness of those lots that you have to contend with to begin with. You don't, you know, giving up, you know, 10, 12 feet of your frontage is, you know, when you only have maybe sometimes 30.
And it's different when.
30 feet gap.
And it's different when you have a beach that people are going to walk out on versus a Rondell where people want access to the bulkhead, they want docks.
Right.
So say again what we're doing here, four-story maximum? Three?
No, I thought it was four, but I'm just thinking.
Four, but the parking would be considered a story.
And is it three and one bonus, is still in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so three with a bonus for, with affordable housing or public access. Limited to three stories. One-story bonus. And then what about that other section, the height overlay? You want that the same, or did you say that was higher?
No, that, we're good with that.
High up to the six.
This is just in.
Most of that you can't use, some of the parcels got all the gas. So that's.
You got existing buildings? You got existing buildings. Now, why is the E strand height overlay not on the other side of the street? Where the Costco tanks used to be next to the.
We talked about that in fact.
Yeah, that was a comment.
That was a comment from us early on.
Because that talks into the hill over there.
Yeah, you could put a 12 building there and have some views.
I think because it's in a district that allows height, let's see.
Do you want to recommend that?
I would recommend that the E strand overlay go across the street.
It's in a T5.
It's T5N right now, first portion of it, and T5F already.
That, that's, that's the, the hill, right? That's.
Because you got the high road, that's a little, probably no.
You can see that I wrote on there. So that, that section, where's that street, what we say, where's, start with the T, Thomas?
Tompkins.
Are of Tompkins, to the left of Tompkins, that should be height overlay too.
T5F. T5F height. Let's see, T5F heights are two-story. No, principal, I'm sorry, principal building height is four max.
It's a missed opportunity.
Potential bonus height two.
Two-story.
And the T5.
Actually, go up to six.
Yeah, on that side.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
They can go up to six on the T5.
Yeah.
It's technically the same, but they're both in a T5.
But the other one misses the waterfront.
But it has the waterfront overlay, so I mean, it's the same, yeah, it's the same. It's just a different overlay. Right, it's four max with a two-story bonus.
Right.
All right. Already did this density comment?
Okay.
And, so we already did that?
Yep, that's the map.
This one was to talk about the density in the T3 neighborhoods?
Okay, so T3 neighborhoods, remove the cottage court and small multiplex from allowed building types, that was a discussion. Um, my thought there is, I know the small multiplex is up to six, but mainly the T3 neighborhoods allow the small multiplex at a four max. Not at all.
Those are your residential neighborhoods.
I?
I mean, the code's basically stripping the city of residential neighborhoods.
So.
I mean, most, most municipalities, and we had talked about other jurisdictions in the state, still have single-family neighborhoods.
I mean, you. It's part of it.
Don't even.
That's just a thought, you know?
No, I know, I'm just saying.
It's just a thought, and I know there was, because I know there was a lot of controversy about it. I mean, it can work, I think it can work if it's done right.
That's the biggest complaint.
That I've had from neighbors in my neighborhood, they're like, this is a single-family neighborhood, we bought a single-family neighborhood, we want to be a single-family neighborhood.
Okay.
I'm in favor of your suggestion, as long as they're conforming to kind of the park requirements that we're doing for those three neighborhoods, yeah.
Okay.
Because the counter to that was also, we didn't want people buying two single-family houses and then putting in a small bus.
Right.
And, and encouraging people to tear down our single-family houses to do this.
I mean, there's options out there. How does everybody else feel?
Yeah, that was one, say that.
What?
Preserving the neighborhoods. Preservation neighborhoods.
So.
They're going away.
Okay, all right, so that's an option. Do you want to put in, we can, I mean, again, these are just options, we can throw as many options in there as you want, you know, I mean, and then think about it.
I'll put yours in.
The other thing, I mean, is to say by special permit. You know, I mean, then you have a little bit of maybe oversight on it.
I actually think the way you're saying it is the way it is written in there, right? Small multiplexes up to four.
Um, I thought small multiplexes were up to six.
I think in T3 it was up to four. It was like.
And.
What about for the T3L's large lots?
They're the ones that are complaining. Islandsberry and Grandview, they're like, if somebody buys a $500,000 house, and next you know you got a six-unit in there earning $3,000 a month per unit with no parking restrictions, they're screaming. I mean, my neighborhood, we at least have some law, so to a certain extent, we're protected from some of this, because our lots are. Average lot on my street is 50 feet wide, you do this.
He would have told the T3 up again.
Oh, please. I think my, my neighborhood, we should be.
Two-three.
But speaking of the wall field, are parks designated on Harris anything?
Some of them are conservation. Conservationists.
Some of them are, some of them are. Some of them are just large lot.
But outside of the T3s, is the proposal for small cottage courts is available to be put up another transect to, right?
Cottage works specifically?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just going to take less time right there.
Could you blow that out a little bit, too?
Yes, huh?
Yeah. Everything is spaced out a little.
Small multiplex. Small multiplex. Building standards for additional requirements.
Yeah. T three, so T. Forty-five is six.
Okay, so T three is presently a four max.
On even on a multi-plexed cottage.
In the small multiplex.
Cottage courts are, is a cottage court, that's kind of like. A whole bunch of tiny. Yeah, that's kind of like a tiny house complex. It's like a little, it's like, it's like.
Thirty D and something like that.
Little cottage.
Cottage courts consists of a series of small detached structures.
That's a large lot, right? It's not really.
But someone once proposed that you. Like the Cardys or something, that someone talked about doing, senior housing. In there, kind of the small lots where they share a yard. I kind of like the idea, it's interesting for certain settings. It won't allow, it's like a senior housing complex where you can share.
For that.
Yeah, yeah, maybe have a kind of a creative sort of neighborhood.
It's like a neighborhood.
Yeah. And at least, oh, you can't, you can't share an open space, you can share yards. It could be nice in.
I think.
In certain settings. I don't think it will, you know, be a particular development. I don't think it can.
Okay.
So where do we end up with that?
Well, we put a small, in T, so right now in T three and small multiplex is only up to four units.
Right now, anyway.
In that, so if you're saying no small multiplex, then there would be no four-unit.
Right.
Structures. And then they just took cottage courts, just for what a cottage court is. And I, so they are in.
In T three?
In T three, which is weird because the Brooklyn says that.
Cottage courts are not allowed in T threes. They're only, oh wait, yes, they are. They're allowed in everything from T four N O, T four N, T three N O, T three N and T three L. So they are allowed in those five districts.
I just have a problem with single-family neighborhoods not being single-family.
Huh?
I have a problem with single-family neighborhoods not being single-family. I mean, I got neighbors that don't want two families, they don't like accessory dwellings.
One single-family neighborhood, that's what they want.
That's old, hot year.
Cottage would be allowed up. That's even more dense.
Yeah. And we're talking just restricting to threes. There's still a, I'm going to say that.
You're not agreeing?
Are we talking cottage courts now?
Cottage courts and multiplex, just restricting, just pulling those out and not allowing them.
In T threes.
In T threes.
I mean, look what happened when Matt or Abby came out with pitch marks.
So you would still be able to have a, I was going to say you'd still be allowed a two, a one, two or three family.
I don't agree with three.
Could you move forward? Is there a three-family building?
Duplexes and.
Oh, was there a three-family building out here?
So in the T threes, you've got building types, small multiplex, corner stores, cottage courts, duplexes, detached houses and carriage house.
Man, I don't mind the, the single families, I don't mind the carriage house, I don't mind the accessory dwelling unit if it meets all of the surface area that Kyle was talking about before. Because a lot of the lots are small and some of those districts still are not. You start getting three, four, or five units, these aren't, these aren't multifamily neighborhoods.
And a duplex is just such a duplex, right? It's, you're just talking two units.
Like a side-by-side duplex.
Two side-by-side or stack two on units, small freezing streets, single building.
Duplex?
Yeah.
Duplex.
Here's one of the duplexes now in those neighborhoods, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. You start going through and forth, you're now. Personalizing it.
I mean, we're going to vote on this at a regular meeting anyway, I mean, just.
Yeah, I mean, this is just the, anything else in terms of densities from anybody?
So, so what we just talked about is the small multiplex and cottage courts will be.
In three units.
In three units?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that there's a building type for three units.
There's a building type for three units, so I think that's.
There's a potential for a duplex or an APU.
Yeah.
But then they have to follow the recommendation.
Well, then you have your lot and home dwellings too, right?
So you have to go with small multiplex and cottage courts.
And three units, hard. I mean, that's the way I, I feel. I'm sensing that there's other members on this end of the table that view it that way.
All right.
Mike?
I was just saying that on, at one point we had a volunteer for a cottage court type community in the Cardys, open space portion across the street. At the time, they couldn't do it, we just didn't fit so many toes. But the person wanted to create kind of these small, single-family units with a shared yard in the middle. It's kind of a nice idea.
So that's a T three N O.
That is a T, I mean, I'm not talking specifically for that. Just saying that that was a proposal at one time, just to give you an idea of what that could look like and whether or not that would be, I don't know that there's a lot of lots that could accommodate that much, that many single-family smaller house units with a shared yard. But it's kind of a need use.
I'm not prepared to change entire city just for one law.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that that law, I'm just saying there could be locations where that kind of layout would be.
A few locations I'm not willing to gave on a T.
Like if you can't do it in T three, they're probably not anywhere else.
Take any more info with how three units.
Three units. Basement, attic, first floor, second floor, everything sliced and diced, it's three units.
Okay.
Like ADU in the back.
Not a, not a new, go three units, it could be.
Could be any single-family converted.
And you're saying no ADU, ADU included to make it a three family?
These residential neighborhoods are single-family.
Up to.
I feel like, I mean, personally, me, my neighborhood's single-family. Every time I talk to a neighbor, they don't want to keep it single-family, they don't even want two-family. But if we're going to encourage housing in the city, I'll go to two units, but beyond that.
So I feel like I should take out, remove cottage court, remove small multiplex from, I should just say maximum two units.
Yes.
Just for.
That's my vote.
I'm going to vote, I'm going to do, I mean, because we do maybe have other, if you have strip bowl, you can propose certain things.
Right.
But you, but Kyle, you got.
Neighborhoods up to, up to two units.
I'm sensing we got one, two, three, four, five people right here, and I don't have, we're weight stamps.
No, I'm, I'm good with that. I just needed more clarity on the three unit. I'm okay with the small and cottage courts definitely, but I needed just when I got the clarity.
ADU, one unit, two, however you.
Two. I just got the clarity.
Two units, maximum including eight.
Pushing single-family right out of the city. That's a problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to make out.
Sorry.
If you have more trees, you have a large house.
I can agree with you. That's fine.
All right. Next, ADU should have design guidelines to fit in with the neighborhood character.
We said somebody came out west.
We talked about that, about conversion of projects.
Right. There currently are no design guidelines.
And that was only two units. Does the language we're talking about now with the ADU's conflicting with what we just talked about ADUs? Prior to this, earlier tonight, that's all?
Same, probably for the parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
We talked about.
I just want to make sure that there's no conflicts.
So we're still saying, so.
And we talked about the E's, just to make sure that.
Yeah, the way I wrote it, it's how it's maximum of two units, period.
I started to get shit about me in addition, but that's right, person killing. I don't necessarily think three families are horrible. You know, if they're done right.
All right.
What is it?
I said, I, I don't, you know, I know, I understand your, your, your position, but I, I don't necessarily think that, you know, a three-family is so horrible.
I don't think a three-family is horrible, I'm just.
I think, I think that, let me hear me out, I think that you have to look at also the whole balance that this code is trying to strike in terms of looking at projects from a form. And that's, I mean, that's what it is, you're looking at, you're, you're, this is a zoning code that puts into play architectural features, streetscape design, landscaping is, is really strong in this code. Where in our current code, we don't have that. And here, you, you look at, you know, you would look at a project, you know, coming in. Just because it's allowed would necessarily make you lock down a box and, you know, it has to be in context with the neighborhood, it has to be set back kind of to meet all of the setbacks. And you've got to have, the form has to kind of be complementary, it's not, you're not just.
I agree with everything that you're saying, but I live in a single-family neighborhood, triple R that has been like that since the 1950s. And you, now you are introducing a code where you're putting more units in the neighborhood and you're adding to the density of which the neighbors do not want. So it doesn't matter how you make it look or how pretty it is, you're adding density, you're adding more people, you're adding more cars, and that's what the single-family neighborhoods don't want. Because they bought in a single-family neighborhood where everyone had distance from each other. And now we're, have a code where we're so concerned about housing that we're pushing our single-family neighborhoods right out of the city by just adding density and adding people into it. And you're going to end up with a true inner city 25 years from now, and all the single-family people are going to go out to the suburbs, which is going to become Hurley and Town of Ulster. Because that's where your single-family housing is going to be. Look at the surrounding jurisdictions and look at their codes, they still have single-family neighborhoods. We looked at the city of Rochester, we looked at other cities, they still have single-family neighborhoods. This code doesn't even provide for a single-family neighborhood.
No.
So that's why the single-family neighborhood residents are having issues with it. I'm hearing it, I have neighbors that are coming to me about it, I'm not happy about it. And in fairness, I'm a real estate attorney, I have people that buy houses all the time and they buy in specific neighborhoods for specific purposes. Some like restaurants and businesses, other people like live-work, and other people want single-family, green lawns, ride a bike in the street, not a lot of cars. And that's what, that's the choice that people have when they buy, and now we're going in and taking a code and we're just basically saying, we don't really care what you picked or what you chose, this is now what we're choosing for you. And that's where residents are going to have a problem, that's where I have a problem as a homeowner.
All around that topic. And you feel strongly about it, I know you feel strongly about neighborhood store, neighborhood corner stores, do you want to include anything in the recommendation of the corner stores?
Well, technically, my neighborhood, you can't have a corner store because it's D restrictions. But that doesn't help other neighborhoods who also are single-family and don't want, again, you have a business, you have a house, somebody buys a house, I'm a lawyer, I buy a house in, 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 in a residential neighborhood, I hang my sign outside and next you know, I've got two injury employees coming every day. I got clients coming every hour in the hour, I got a FedEx truck, a UPS truck, a W Basin truck, water truck. I bought a business uptown because that's the neighborhood and that's kind of where a lot of businesses are. But now you're introducing all this traffic into residential areas by having a corner store. And people that are living next door, they don't want all this.
I agree. I mean, that's the way it used to be, and you can't go back. There was a corner store on maybe block.
Yeah. I was from up those. Looks, yeah.
So.
And the corner store in this definition does not just include a.
Of course. It's not, it's not, it's not.
It can be a hairdresser, it can be a lawyer, it can be a tax. And it also doesn't have a corner, it could be mid-block, it could be whatever.
I mean, mid-block, you just take out between two people, one guy's got a pool, another guy's got a pool, and then the other person's got blow dryer running out the side of the house.
Well, I mean, right now, you can, I mean, you can have office space in your, most of these if you are a resident. You know, you can have your business.
Well, home occupation.
There.
Home occupation is different, in home occupation, you're not hanging a sign and you don't have people coming and going.
If he's doing hairdressing, things like that, yeah, you.
Not a.
Well, I would have no problem with the definition of a corner store was truly a corner store.
I'm going to read it, right? A small format commercial or mixed-use building that provides a retail or service commerce use intended to serve residents of the surrounding neighborhood on the ground floor. Residential or office usage above may be located on upper floors. Corner store does not have to be located on the corner.
You also have to look at some of the residential neighborhoods, like my neighborhood. I, my neighborhood's only two blocks wide, and then I'm out on Albany Avenue, which is a commercial district. I don't need a corner store in the middle of the block. You have other areas up along Clifton Avenue. Again, you, you got Foxhole Avenue's got some businesses, you've got Broadway that's got business, I mean, we're not talking, we have to go far here to get to things. If I bought a single-family house in a neighborhood and I had kids, and somebody bought the house next door to me, and all of a sudden there was an active business with employees and people coming and going and going all hours of the night. I mean, how many times is a planning board, do we ask, what's your hours of operation? Are there hours of operation on these corner stores?
There are, I don't know what they are, but there are.
I, I would be very upset.
I don't, I'm not bringing it up because I want to, I mean, I don't have a really.
Well.
Whatever, if you want them taken out of T three N, I just want to know so I can write it down. Or if you want them taken out of any other section.
T three across the word, because they're great. The lengthy discussion of the last time we brought this up.
Okay, so you want them out of the T three? Okay, T threes.
Vince, I mean, what's your viewpoint?
Yeah.
I mean, you guys all in residential neighborhoods, you made the notes, so. You guys all in residential neighborhoods, you made the notes, so...
You got a lot of votes.
I have stewards, I think most of us have something close to that.
That, that you always got trailers, mark there.
I think some of my other issues. Preservation of older neighborhoods, families, parking is one. Multi-family, ADU sale, issues with...
I mean, a corner store, you could have a plumber, and also a, you know, water heaters, where it's getting delivered.
What if you had some, I mean, like, what if you, um, had requirements, like, you couldn't be located within 2,500 feet of another one, I, I mean, just throw that number out, like, anything like that, if it, just to open, you know, a potential up, I mean, or buy a special permit only, you know, so you would have some controls over it, and you would be able to monitor hours and things like that, I mean, or you say only 50% of the structure, so you couldn't have, like, you know, the whole, or be owner-occupied, or, I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing...
But why is it, why is it bad to have a single-family?
I'm just throwing things out for thought.
But I'm asking, why is it wrong to want a single-family, why is, why is a single-family neighborhood, why should they have to incur more density and more people?
I'm just saying that there are these types of businesses that do exist in single-family neighborhoods now, and they are, they are useful, I mean, they serve the immediate neighborhood.
I agree with you, but they were there when the person next door bought their property and knew that that business was next door, and that's what they were buying next to. By changing the code, now a person in a single-family neighborhood that bought in that neighborhood has no idea what the next property, next work would be.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's a horrible thing, um, but I'm saying, maybe there are ways that it could happen, but in a limited sense, I mean, and that's all I'm just throwing out there, I mean, I'm just, you know...
To not have to just get in the car to go any, anywhere retail, it's, I don't know, I like being able to walk things.
I do too, and I walked a half a block, I met Stewart's Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Yes, my see, that's, that's why...
Which is a business district, that's why I...
Okay, that's why I threw out the distance thing, maybe that's a way to say, okay, they can't be, I mean, you're not gonna have one, you know, every 50 feet.
And no one's gonna open a convenience store a block from stores.
It is all.
I don't know about a business.
No sign, no...
No sign. The only thing, he had a pickup truck, and his wife had a car. And they had a garage in the back, that just, you never knew.
But if you allow a corner store, now you know it's a business.
That's right.
The issue I have is the trailers, too, I see them more and more.
Landscaping trailers.
Whatever they, whatever they're using it for, it's more...
They passed the law. And years ago, you couldn't park over a, or a vehicle or something, on a six-string. Okay, my father got a ticket for it. Now, Jesus, look what you have. There is no enforcement. And that's what's gonna happen if you start a business. There is no, people across the street from me, they park in it where they want, left side that they got, there's no enforcement.
I mean, you saw how the neighborhood helped when they tried to put an accessory dwelling unit in over a Matter Avenue. And the biggest argument was, we want a single-family neighborhood. The house next was a single-family.
That's what I said, maybe buy special use permit, like, deal with that option too.
You're, you're opening the door.
If you, if you're going with that standard, though, I mean, every time we have a proposal in a neighborhood, there's people that come out against it.
Yeah.
I mean...
Very rarely have we, very rarely, as the 13 years I've been on this board, have we had meeting after meeting where a neighborhood really came out screaming about something, and as a board, we either voted it down or we modified it to make the neighborhood happy. If people didn't come out and scream, then we allow it. And that was the one few instances where we said no, because the neighborhood was adamant they didn't want it.
Well, we've had a lot of things where the neighborhoods have come out against, I mean, if you, like, the Almazans, the...
Yes.
What the law required, the law allowed those uses.
The... Well, the law allowed that use.
ADU too.
It was oversized.
It was oversized.
Yeah. I mean, it was technically, he could have applied for something that was smaller.
Correct.
Okay, well, I don't wanna get off on that, 'cause it's 8:15, and the battery's dying, so... So I took one out. Corner stores, remove corner stores from T3 neighborhoods.
Yep.
ADU should have design guidelines to fit the character of the neighborhood.
Or the character of the neighborhood and the architecture of the...
Of the existing.
Of existing property.
You don't wanna set a precedent, 'cause somebody used to think if my parents, I wanted to bring in posters of my home. I'm considering being in there.
Oh, you did have extension from District 1, the big parcel front, that's, you know, I think...
You're not allowing me to do that.
I did, but then we had it.
That's what I wanted, too.
Let's, we'll go back to that, but, um... Because I think that's about having commercial on the ground.
Right, that's, that's removed.
Uh, so, and then the map changes, was Washington Avenue.
We did that.
Andrea had a good point about that, though, I mean, to be able to walk. That was all concept, bringing home stores to the able-walkable, bikeable old community type, to learn, and that was all purpose, I think, of that.
I, I don't know where Terry's Deli is, what, what that is, but that...
Emerson Street.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know what zone that is, but to me, that's like corner store, and that was like such a huge part growing up for me, and...
Well, and that's, that's, and that's...
And that's my houses.
And that was an existing place, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I don't wanna discourage that
Yeah.
kind of thing from being able to be developed.
Peemaking, grandfathers.
I do agree with that, just when I was little, we had, we had, you know, gandos and stuff like that, but I do, I do think Robert's right that if you, if they're allowed in T4, they are pretty walkable from most neighborhoods, I mean, there are sections up here, you know, that might get a little cold here, and then over here, yeah.
And just to expand on what you said, that's one reason that my ex and I bought on Pearl Street, is because of, she grew up around the corner from Terry's, that was a good walkable thing. But you know, you don't want them to be, that's Robert's point, that you don't want it to become an issue where you're gonna have them pop up all over the place, and the density becomes an issue, and...
I think, I think it's more the traffic.
I, I, look, I, I drive by Terry's every day, and I, I, there's, it's just the way that's, it's, there's cars walking in the place.
Probably because Terry's is really the only, one of the only ones.
That's right, that's how I watch, there's...
Always busy.
Tough, so...
It's tough to get through there.
Yep. I could just imagine them popping up throughout the rest of the neighborhood and how it would affect it, so I...
There's a little, there's a little deli that opened up on Foxhole Avenue.
That's where we just wanted to... They're dancing. But the river is always right, though.
Alright, so I think that was the end of my list, oh, so that...
We want to talk about, yeah, that last one, the other one we had was to extend the shopfront district, but we talked about that a little bit before. Um, the T5 N just does go around there, and then you do have the flex beyond that, so it'd be T5 N.
Well, I think the...
Is that the shopfront we were talking about?
I think, I think the only reason that that came up separate was because then that would require a ground-floor commercial, maybe? Rather than allowing...
And, but it is, it does go down...
It allows it, but it doesn't require it.
Oh.
You know what I mean? You could have, I don't know if you want it that way, but if this...
Wait, is it T4 Main Street or?
Oh, it is T5 Main Street.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Yeah.
It's already that one.
Okay, yeah.
So that's it, does anyone have any, okay, or items that were not brought up?
Any else?
Think about it, okay.
Um, I do wanna think about some dates for a special meeting, if you wanted to do that, versus bring this to a planning board meeting. So I've got, we have to have our, our committee done by the 11th.
Is that the extension?
Just out of curiosity, I know, into direct, but since we've kind of hashed this, and we have this in the format, I don't think there's a lot more for us to discuss other than just reviewing the recommendations, so is this something that can go to a regular meeting?
Well, that was, that's what we wanted originally, but then the board said no, they wanted to have a special meeting, so, I mean, we do it.
Oh, well, just now that we've gone through it all, I'm not sure that we have enough for a special meeting.
I, it's up to the board. Uh, we don't, well, the 17th agenda is...
So I think we have 13 items.
Yeah. I mean, our, our extension was only through April 11th.
But I mean, I guess, what our next meeting, is that like a long meeting, is tabled items, just simple?
Uh, I can show you the agenda if you'd like.
It's not bad.
I don't think it's terrible.
I do have Sanji coming back, uh, that might take a little bit of time.
Will that turn, is that gonna turn into a to the special program be done, then, or it'll be just a regular?
It's special permit, yeah. This is renewable.
I can show you the agenda if you want, it's got, um, Theodore's.
And Albany Avenue is coming back, that project, so it might take a little bit of time, Prince Street is coming back. Um, that's the eight units. Um... Other than that, I don't think anything, you have a short-term rental, which is new. Think that's big.
I mean, I think at this point, it's just a matter of, even if you send something out ahead of time for comments, I think it's just a matter of spelling it out, right?
Right. Someone would make a motion.
So I think it can just be done at a regular meeting, unless you guys...
You think, I think we can do that, you think, at a regular meeting?
I don't, yeah, yeah, sure.
I, I agree for a regular meeting, I mean, next week, I'm in Florida anyway, so I'm out for a meeting next week. So we need to do it by the 11th, but that's somewhere over next week.
The 11th and the 12th is the date, so that we kind of have to...
Sorry, sorry.
I mean, you kind of committed to doing something by the 11th. Um, but I, you know, I did put 12th in there as an option as a date, because it was closer to our extension request.
So you tell us whatever's easiest for you. We have a special meeting, I think we're gonna be here all 10 minutes.
Is the 11th a, a drop date?
Huh? No, it's not advertised.
We can put that, well.
The 11th is a drop date, or is it?
Well, I, we asked for the extension, because technically, we had to do it within 45 days, um, so we, we asked for the extension of another 45 days, which brought us to the 11th.
But I, I don't think that they're going to not accept regular meetings if it's on the 17th.
If you tell them you're gonna do it at the regular meeting, then, that'd be fine, then?
Um, yeah, I would suspect, I'll say, okay.
That's, that's basically, yeah, well, why not?
There's the other one, there's a, it's a mine reduction after that for Daley Freeman. And that's it, right now.
They're huge. Okay, we have a regular meeting.
Has that boarding house always been that contentious?
Yep, it's 1940.
And they just get, they get a pass every time?
Well, they, uh, they meet the minimum five group, five group.
I'm gonna go during this meeting?
Yeah.